Yeah. It's probably that.
Live and in color.
That's gonna be a side.
But yes, as a reminder, for those of you that are sitting in this room, ten twenty, two thirty is when headshots will be available. It's gonna be a board member, yeah, it's gonna take place in this building. She's just gonna set up a backdrop, board members and department heads.
What was the timeframe now?
About two thirty. So anytime between two thirty and the meeting is when she'll be set up.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And. Uh, yeah.
Yeah. The goal of these is website for the city, so we have our faces on the website, and then also to have photos hung of us in the billing office as well.
Well, and, and, and there's, one of the reasons for this is, uh, I think because most people don't know who the uh, utility board members are.
Yep.
And if they do know who they are, I, they, 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 they seem to get confused on what some of the role is, and I think that's.
Yeah.
That's important that we, uh, share that, uh.
Yeah, we get confused with city council or other boards and commissions, and I think it's really important for people to understand, A, who we are, but then B, I would also like for us to seek to get business cards and have those available in the billing office as well, so if people do have questions of us as the utility service board members, there are easy reference points for them to grab to be able to contact us at our FMU email address, if that would be feasible or okay with everyone as well.
Well, not only is it okay, I think it's something we've missed in the past for whatever reason. If you look at how Lebanon Utility Board and Peru Utility Board operate, it's just that way. I had a recent occurrence, uh, occasion to go up to the, uh, county commissioners', secretary's office uh, to get the email address for each of our county commissioners', and wouldn't you know it, I was presented with each of our commissioners or the county commissioners have business cards, very professional with logo, their personal cellphone number and their uh, email contact information on the card. I think if we just follow that lead, uh, we'll be in a, in good spot, uh, going forward, uh, cause it is important that the public knows how to get ahold of us, uh, outside of, uh, social media.
Yeah, yeah. I wanna continue to champion the fact that we are reachable anytime. You don't have to wait for a meeting, you don't have to wait to try and tag us on social media, which is not an official form of communication, that we are available by email, and that we will answer their questions either personally there, and if we feel it's for the good of the order, we will also answer them live during our public participation situation. So continue to be more and more questions. There's a lot of misinformation out there that I continue to try to combat as much as I can without speaking for everyone. Um, there's just a lot of misunderstanding going on about how we serve, who we serve, what is being paid for what we do to serve them, and that sort of thing, so.
And, and that being said, uh, there is a, maybe a caveat to that, if, if I may, uh, it, it is not the case that, uh, people in general can throw a question in our way and expect a guaranteed answer from one of us on any topic, uh, under the sun. But what we wanna do is understand what questions are out there and then formulate a response that represents the response of the body, including Todd, who's not a member of the utility board.
Correct.
Uh, for many years, Todd was, uh, introduced as the general manager of the utility board, and that may have promulgated, uh, some misunderstanding that not only is he a member of the board, but we all work for him, so it's, it's actually the other way around. But, uh, local, local radio media had, had that kinda confused, so that's not only the case, but uh, I, I agree, and I think we can move forward on that, and, and, uh, it'll be a good thing for everybody, so, good.
All right. Let's talk about the first topic that, uh, let's talk about, uh, insurance first, Todd. You and I were at an insurance meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, if I re, if I can paraphrase kinda what, we're in, we're in for a, an increase of our contribution to insurance, but it's within the budget that we pretty much have in mind. Is that the way you understood it?
Yeah, the, there's two parts to our insurance, it's we're partially self-insured. We have, uh, we're, we, we are self-insured up to the hundred thousand dollar mark per person. And the, the cost, I think right now, we have only one firm quote, or that they would sign the paperwork today if, if it was decided upon, it was gonna be like a twenty-two point three percent, or twenty-two point five percent increase on the fixed cost. But that fixed cost is on a million dollars. So it's gonna go at two hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars, but you gotta remember though too, that's on the whole city and utility plan. So our portion of that, somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. When it comes down to it. Um, there are still, but back to Mike's question or, or, or comment, yes, it's, we're still, they still have us predicted of coming in under budget for this year. And we've had some doozy claims. We've, we've, we've paid out, uh, the hundred thousand dollars on, I think, four, and there's a fifth one that's approaching that hundred thousand dollars, but we're still under, uh, with, with everything else.
And, and we have, uh, for context, the utility employees' portion of our insurance costs have not increased for a number of years, correct?
I'm gonna say at least six.
Yeah, we've held the line.
Somewhere between five and six.
Five and six years.
Yeah.
We're now faced with, there is a cost increase. We see in the future, we're gonna have to somehow accommodate, that's what I'm, what I'm understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, in the discussion, there was a couple of things were discussed. One is in, in, increasing employee contribution, and the other is, uh, raising the hundred, hundred thousand to a hundred, a hundred and fifty, I believe.
Hundred twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five this step, right?
Yeah.
Um.
As in, we would contribute more, or what do you mean for the hundred and twenty-five?
Well, we would have to pay.
Oh, self-insured, okay.
Yeah, we would have to.
You're self-insured for.
Yes, thank you.
But on, even though it incre- increases that individual amount, on the total amount of insurance, it would drop it some.
So essentially by us agreeing to pay more in self-insured claims, we would in turn keep our costs lower to the insurance provider.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, which, I mean, which makes sense, we're taking on more of the liability slash burden.
You take on more liability, and you, and you hope that you can continue to have minimal claims over that one twenty?
Well, those would be substantial claims, right? So you would hope that you aren't having employees regularly having substantial health claims for their safety and health, obviously, as well as the financial implications of that.
You can look at, you can look at it that, okay, you're gambling.
You are.
But with the history that we've shown over the years, we really, I mean, there was one year where we never went over the, the threshold.
Yeah.
But there's been a couple of years that we have gone over the threshold.
Sure.
One year was only one person.
Yep.
And so, you know.
But we're still coming in under budget, even having done four individuals, right?
Right, right.
Potentially five, you said.
So the analogy, my homeowner's insurance is lower every year what I pay because I've chosen to have a thousand dollar deductible in my homeowner's insurance.
Right.
The agency originally showed me a policy that was two hundred dollar deductible, and I told them, I, I can't afford that, let's make it a thousand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm gonna cover the difference, and this is very similar to that.
Yeah, no, that makes complete sense. I just, cause you threw out contribution to the city, and then they were similar numbers to ourselves, so I was just making sure I had the right.
Yeah.
And one of the, I mean, really, one of the things that we have been coming under budget on is that when we have had retirements and stuff, those positions just haven't been replaced, so we reduced our headcount.
Right.
Which reduces our insured, the insured on, on the, uh, insurance as well, but we're pretty much now, if somebody leaves, although we may, we may have one that may not go back, you know, may not have to be replaced, so it's another deduction, but at one time, we were approaching eighty people on the plan, and I think that book shows now we're down to sixty-two.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which does make a substantial difference, absolutely it does.
It makes a big difference, yeah. You take sixty-two people and they all get sick, and it would, you know, you're looking at six point two million dollars, but.
And would, would it be fair to say, Mike, and I, I did miss the last two, uh, insurance committee meetings, would it be fair to say that in general, um, we were also presented, uh, the city utilities was presented with a couple of other options that might, uh, lower our cost exposure. Uh, but for various reasons, uh, other parties in the, in the meeting, uh, were not, um, were not in a fa- in favor of taking those options, so they're not really on the table at this point. So we're left with things that, that we can do as utilities to be responsible for our.
Yes, I, I would say that's a.
Okay.
Now, the other thing is, they, they're still exploring other plans or other options, especially in the prescription stuff and those kinda things, uh, it's, having been on that committee, I didn't realize there were so many different ways that people do prescriptions, uh, and it, 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 it's, but it's, it's also convenient for everything to be in the same anthem right now, I mean anthem, pa- ma- vision, men, uh, health and, uh, dental are all in the same, you only have one card, but.
Sure.
Some of those things sometimes could be a little bit confusing, cause there's different companies that they, uh, have options, but I think for, for the most part, usually we get pretty good, uh, recommendations from MJ and.
And we do not have the number, if we go to the, the number that they quote, or is a firm number right now, that was still at a hundred thousand dollars. They have not reported back on what it would be with a hundred and twelve thousand.
So what, uh, how far are we trying to get with this discussion this evening, other than all of us being aware that there is on the horizon a, a perceived future need to mitigate higher, higher costs? Um, what that looks like, we don't know exactly when it occurs, we don't know exactly, but what, what would you have us do tonight, uh, Mike?
Well, as I looked at it, I, I, I think it's, it's imminent that it's gonna happen, um, in the next year or two.
Yeah.
That we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make some adjustments.
Yeah.
I don't know about you, Todd, how you, cause.
Oh, I think that you're too, too late.
Well.
Or behind schedule, if you ask me, so, yeah, I think we're gonna have to, for now. Because it's not gonna get any less money than what it is, so.
We're also seeing, uh, the era of what's called personalized medicine, um, and then we're seeing in addition to that, uh, certain drugs, partic- particularly, uh, cancer drugs being put on that special list. What's that list called, Todd?
I don't know.
Okay.
I forget what it's called.
The radar list, or what it is, the, uh.
No, you're thinking of the laser, aren't you?
The laser list, yeah.
No, the laser is for somebody that has been
Right.
racking up claims, and they take that from a hundred thousand dollars, and they slap this with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar price.
Yeah, so radar and, radar and laser are, are similar.
Okay.
So forgive me for that. So there, there's changes that we're, we're being faced to accommodate that are not of our own choosing. And the one thing I would say, uh, we need to be proactive as a board and look out for our employees' health and health coverage, and that, that means, uh, we just don't bury our head in the sand and wait till the worst happens. We, we need to be thinking ahead, so um, I see the future, much like Mike mentioned, uh, if not sooner, um, maybe perhaps as soon as next year, so uh, we, we need to be prepared. What can the utilities do for our utility employees? Even if the city who has the same policy, we share the same policy, maybe the city administration through the Board of Works does not wish to do that change. We may have to do a change for our employees.
I think one of, one of the problems is their employees have in, in, increased over the last couple of years, too.
Right, their staff is growing, yeah, yeah, sure.
So they're, they're, they're fighting a uphill battle now.
Yeah.
Are there also additional, and maybe this is for an offline conversation, so tell me if it needs to be, but are there additional things that we could be doing from the wellness championing side? You know, I know we do biometric screening, I know we do things like that, but are there additional things that we could be doing on the outside that influence those costs? I know there are a lot of companies who are now hiring in their HR department wellness directors who are specifically in charge of regularly championing wellness initiatives throughout the organization.
We actually have one through the clinic, it's a pretty opportunity to go to the health coach.
Right, right. Right, and I'm just wondering if, if there's opportunity for us to even pay more attention to those types of things, if it's a steps challenge in the summertime. I mean, I know, we're talking about more things for people to think about, but I'm, I know that has been a strategy that has continued to increase in a lot of organizations who have growing workforces, who have workforces who work hard and may not always take seriously exactly what they're eating, or those types of things, may not take advantage of a free health coach at a clinic, but if it's something where it's a workday, that maybe half the day is dedicated to a wellness summit type activity or things like that, I'm just asking these types of questions for additional strategic focus on how to.
One of, one of the things that comes up every time we start these meetings for the next year is the, uh, standards for the.
The biometrics, yeah.
Biometrics.
Just tighten them up.
Yep.
And it didn't, it, I really thought it was gonna happen this year, but it didn't happen, so we're still at the same standards, but they were talking about tighten those restrictions up, because I think somebody can get twenty dollars off
Yep.
for the month or, or by weekly, or by monthly.
Or forty, up to forty.
Up to forty a month, yep.
Up to forty bucks, so, yeah, so twenty dollars to pay, and they were, but that, that.
What happens is that doesn't come up until about June.
Then, then it starts to.
And then it's, you know, you, you need to give the employees opportunity, so it should probably be talked about in January.
Sure.
For the next, for twenty twenty-six.
What the standards are going to be.
Or for twenty twenty-seven, I mean.
Yeah, sure.
In order that we can be, I'll use the phrase, so we can be responsibly bold, at the next utility or next insurance committee meeting, uh, let's make certain we ask, we ask, uh, the question, and we, we get a list of what are the possible potential changes we could make as utilities without abrogating or risking the fact that we have a shared coverage situation under one policy with the city. For, for example, if the Board of Works and the mayor don't wanna change those metrics, maybe we can, and we just have different metrics under the same plan, and if so, maybe we chose, we choose to do that, that affects our cost of our employees.
I can tell you one of the things you're gonna hear us to change the premiums that the employees pay, cause they push that every meeting. They did a little bit the other day.
When they, when you say they, who's they, MJ?
MJ.
So our insurance negotiator or manager, okay. But isn't it also true that the mayor is not in favor of that?
I cannot confirm nor deny that.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, uh, from the utility side, we, we do have one policy that we share with the city. We have one federal ID tax number, for example, that city and utilities. We are one entity as far as the state of Indiana goes, we're not two. Um, all of our employees are employees of the city, for example, so within those constraints of having one policy, what adjustments can we make as the utility board to help offset the cost our employees incur? That's, that's number one to me, cause if we could do X, Y, and Z, then we can choose among those. If we can't do anything at all, then we're at the mercy of the Board of Works, and.
Well, it hasn't really been that many years ago that we've been on the same insurance policy, has it? It's only been probably, what, ten or twelve years?
No, it's been much less than that, but, uh, that is a um, very sensitive topic, and there is no, on the city side, there's no interest in us having a separate policy, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I can understand that.
So, and, and if we, uh, went out to seek a separate policy with half the number of people, we would undoubtedly raise our costs pretty significantly, so.
There's definitely strength in numbers, for sure.
There's actually the, the opposite argument. If we could join with other city, city utility administrations, for example, Tipton, Lebanon, Elwood, if we made a consortium of several communities and had the same policy, we might get lower rates, but the city is not interested in doing that either, to my understanding.
I know school corporations are doing that.
They are, yeah. Companies are doing that.
Well, you're even seeing it happen with Chamber of Commerce entities and things like that, that are talking about these Miwa-type arrangements. It's, I forget what Miwa stands for, but it's, it's, again, mass numbers of people joining together to try and leverage strength in numbers to leverage better policy rates, so.
Well, right now, what was the number, forty-three per- they paid out forty-three percent more in claims and they have premiums this year, was that, is that the right number?
I think it was.
It's pretty close to that, so you know you're gonna get hit with something when they're paying out more than they're taking.
Yeah.
But one of the things, back on biometrics, you know, instead of changing the premiums, you know, I'm just throwing this out there, if you take away the biometrics, that's another twenty-nine thousand dollars that goes towards our budget on that a year with sixty-two people on the insurance. You know, and that might be, that, that might be where we start, or you cut that in half the first year, and you, you take it to the full thing in twenty-seven, or twenty-eight, however we wanna do it.
Yeah, I mean.
Or however you guys wanna do it.
For me, I look at it as, I would rather champion, I would rather champion health, so I would rather champion tighter standards of biometrics before we eliminate biometrics altogether, right? Because at the end of the day, I would like to know that we are rewarding health in our employees, right? We're rewarding wellness in some way, shape, or form. So I'd rather see us tighten those standards, which may actually, again, help in alleviating some of that cost, right?
Right.
Inevitably, um, but I also am not a part of the meetings that you guys are a part of to hear all the facts and figures that are being thrown at you from an insurance standpoint.
I will try to make the next meeting of the insurance committee, and, uh, I'll try to speak to that, uh, that topic, so we get at least a discussion of what potentially might the utilities do, what's, what's in scope of changes we might make, and what is out of scope or not allowed. I, I think we need to know exactly where that delineation is for the coming year.
Yeah.
And then as Mike says, we need to work on this really throughout the year, not start at the end of March or April for the following year. It, it's always too late when we do that, so.
And I may not even take a meeting with MJ and everything else, it's just a discussion that you guys have to have on what you're gonna do, and then, and you just implement.
Yeah.
Is, is what I was, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, Mike, if you're, if you're agreeable, then maybe we can draft an email to that effect and, and ask that question. Is that, can I send you a draft of that?
Sure.
Okay. Good point.
Uh, talk about employee pen, uh, en- employee reviews. You talked a little bit about it.
Yeah, um, I went down and saw Jordan a couple of weeks ago and got him, uh, Excel file and didn't get the right one, and then he looked at it, I believe, and it's locked, so he's looking for the password to unlock it and get it. If it rains tonight or tomorrow morning, I'm going down there to see him, and we're gonna get the right one, because it has all the things that the departments are in there and everything. I've got one of the first drafts, is what I got, on the, on the jump drive, so if I can get that, then I'm still, everybody will have their copies, just gotta make some adjustments on the, I think we're, we put in the budget to one and a half percent instead of one percent, and then change a couple of dates and get that done, and then I can start distributing them to the department heads and let them start working on those.
I'll look at the one I have and see if it has a lock on it.
Yeah, and you'll have the departments, and then the departments will, you open it up, and then there's a tab for everybody in that department. Since we had some turnover, I just gotta change some names around, or not turnover.
Yeah, I feel like we all got sent a copy of that at some point in time.
Yeah, but if it's, I have the copy, well, if I have the copy, I should be able to unlock it.
That's what I'm wondering, because I feel like I remember, this would have been one of the first board meetings I was part of.
I didn't even think about that, I just wanted the master copy, but.
Well, sure, but I feel like we all got emailed, whatever the final copy was, because we were reviewing it and discussing it in a board meeting as far as how it was executed, the initial results, you know, that type of stuff, the scoring mechanisms.
Yeah.
Which I can look for it too, Todd, and see if I.
Yeah, but without that password, I don't wanna have to start over.
Is there anything else, since we don't know, we don't know, is there anything else that may have been on Ken's personal computer that we need to run the business?
No. We got the budget for, I've got the budget for Matt, and it was unlocked, so I've got that, Andrew's already got it adjusted for twenty twenty-six, and I know the calculations, what I wanna do is get September all in there, and then I can, we'll have better, more accurate numbers for the year, and then we can start really crunching them, but we had that one, we had that resolved. But other than that, no, I, I had everything else.
So we have an electronic copy of all the current job descriptions that are up to date?
I had those anyway, I was the one that dispersed them, so, so those are all in my.
Alright. So there's no other?
No.
Stuff in that category? Alright, good.
Nope.
Talking about, uh, the budget review, will be, end of this month, it'll be, it'll be ten, ten months of expenses.
We'll have nine months in actually.
Have, have nine months.
If we can wait, if we start working on them, getting them cleaned up, and then I can wait for October, I would really like to do that. And then have.
For that, to do it in November.
For approval or a good hard look in at it, you know, the second meeting in November is what I would like to do. Cause I think last year, we waited all the way till December.
Correct.
And we got eleven months.
Because of the numbers. The numbers were delayed from the city going to Andrew.
Yes.
Yes.
So we ended up having to wait until like, I mean, kind of dire last minute.
Yeah, but I, we're, we're in really good shape right now, you know, from our mid-year review and everything, and right now, what I've, I have looked at, uh, I looked at Friday, we're, we're still doing well, very well, so I think we can, we can push that up a couple, three weeks from where we were last year.
Why, I think, um, we owe it to the city council and the mayor. Um, by ordinance, we are to report our fiscal ci- fiscal condition, and there's a certain date on the calendar.
I think it's the end of November.
Last year, that did not occur till January, on, on the reason that, well, the entire year isn't end, I don't think that's a good answer. I think, I think we should do what the ordinance says up to that date through, through nine months. Here's our report. We're projecting to be on plan, on budget for the full twelve months, but here's our nine-month report. We meet the letter of the law and the ordinance, and then when we have the full year in January, we can give them that update, too.
Okay. I don't disagree with that.
I'm, I'm.
I think the, one of the things that we have to do is present them the budget for twenty-six.
We do.
Yes.
Before that end of.
We do.
Yes.
For their information, yes.
I don't think we owe them a fiscal report at the end of the year, though, but we do have to get their budget for acceptance.
Yes, they have to view it and at least accept that they have received it, yes.
And that's all we do, is accept that they've received it, that's all we do.
Correct, yes.
Not that they're approving it, but they do have it, so.
But I do know in the past, too, I think there was question on the fact that like, yes, that is written into, whatever you wanna call it, statute, code, ordinance, resolution, whatever the word is, right? But at the end of the day, thank you, but at the end of the day, there were rarely formal requests sent our way of, could you please present your budget at said meeting, right? And so it goes back to chicken or egg, who is supposed to extend that, and is it up to us to say, we would like to be put on the agenda to show you our budget, or is it up to them to say, we would like for you to present your budget to us in November at this meeting?
Well, we're, that's true, we're aware of the ordinance, and we're aware of the convention, and the expectation is at the end of November. Um, so we can, we can either provide what we have through nine months.
Uh, you know, a, a budget is a guideline anyway.
It is.
Yeah.
It's a point-in-time report.
Yeah.
Here, here you are. And I, I would suspect it would be received without any comment, maybe a thank you, and we move on, so. Yeah.
I don't see that as being a problem.
No, I, I just would like to be a good partner and get it out there.
Okay.
Particularly in, in light of the, the future topic of the, uh, the pilot, uh, coming up here shortly.
Yeah, that's, matter of fact, the next topic.
Okay.
Pilot, let's go there.
Alright.
Alright, you, you've looked into the pilot with other city utili- utility.
Yep.
What have you been, what have your findings been?
Well, it got started at a, in a meeting I was in, and it was handed to me to where they was starting, they was gonna ask for over eight hundred thousand dollars in five.
This, another city?
No, our city was. No. Our city was because of a report that was generated by Reedy Financial.
And, and who, where's your source of information on that?
I was sitting in the meeting and it was handed to me.
Someone said that they're gonna, the city of Frankfurt's gonna ask.
This is what the new pilot, they're telling us that the new pilot program's gonna be. And I said, no, it's not.
Yeah, Reedy produced the report as an encouragement to city council, is my understanding.
Yes, you're, well, no, it was a small group in the conference room.
And they presented it as an option for additional revenue to offset concerns over budgetary needs.
Yes. So I started looking into it. I started looking into it and found some errors in the report. I talked to, with Caitlin Schaper from Reedy. And we got down to that after speaking with her, her numbers came up to five hundred and four thousand dollars. But after further research with other communities in the I U R C, our numbers now were at three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Which right presently, we're paying four hundred and fifty thousand.
And let's, let's back the bus up a minute.
Okay.
Uh, pilot is an acronym, payment and lieu of taxes.
Correct.
And it represents the dollar, the annual dollar value that if the Frankfurt Utilities paid taxes on the property that we have control over.
Correct.
The property tax paid to Frankfurt would be this amount of money.
Correct.
The, the constraints in that are, we would only be paying property tax to the city of Frankfurt on property that's physically within the city limits, obviously.
Correct. That's one of the big changes because our water plant's not the city limits.
Yeah.
That, that was a big change right there because that went, it went way down.
The state statute, my understanding is, um, allows us to pay that amount of money, but does not authorize us to pay a pilot amount in excess of what we would have paid in taxes.
That is correct.
Okay. So we are currently violating state statute because we're currently paying more than our taxable rate would have us pay.
And one of the other things that we ran to, we found in electric is, everyone, you use the same formula for all of it. It's your tax rate or times, uh, your, it's, it's your assets times the tax rate divided by a hundred to get it. So it's point, it's actually point zero two one three two three cents is what that is. But on electric, you also divide it by three to get that number. So it's really a pretty simple formula. And the other thing is, is that when I, when I spoke, that they did not do, and we just made, we made a an assumption that sixty percent of our electric, our electric assets are within the city. We didn't because she didn't know that, uh, or Reedy didn't know that we went outside the city limit on, on electric, which we all know we do. Um, so, you know, for instance, right now, we pay a hundred and sixteen thousand six sixty-six, I believe, or six sixty-five. Out of electric, we're coming up with seventy-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The big change that we have in sewer, since we had the expansion and everything else, they're gonna go from a hundred and sixteen and some change to two oh six, two hundred and six. But, uh, water or storm waters, fourteen thousand and waters, forty-nine, seven, ninety-five to get, to get our.
So give us, give us the amount we're paying annually currently. We're paying a four fifty.
Total from the utilities.
Right, and the total calculated pilot should be not more than how much?
Should not be more than four hundred and fifty thousand.
No, no, the number you.
Statute.
The number you arrived at.
You said three hundred and forty.
Yeah, our number calculated, calculated is three forty-eight, one forty-nine. I'll give you a copy of this. I got copies for everybody.
Didn't, didn't the board ask for an appraisal or something of what we have in the city limits at two meetings ago?
Yes, and I was gonna get that from the insurance guy that just came through and did the insurance appraisal. And you know what? I never called Todd. Todd Jackson, I never called.
My other question is, is, isn't there also additional concern over how the records process is taking place of the request for pilot funds? And then us providing those funds back to the city. Cause I believe there is, right, I believe there is statutory language. And again, I'm not an attorney here, but I believe there is statutory language that dictates how that process is supposed to be accounted for.
I haven't dug that part into it.
Yes. And so I, if I remember correctly, when Josh presented the information that he relayed to all of us, one of his probably more important concerns was, A, State Board of Accounts has yet to flag this. Why not? Because we are not in line with statutory requirement of how this process takes place from city council to us and then back. Right? And the documentation wasn't there as to how we've arrived at previous numbers, how we are distributing funds, them receiving funds, us recording for those things, right? Obviously, we have it as a line item in our budget. But that process was not in line with state statute.
Right, I think the numbers that was used last year is off of Reedy's numbers.
It's off of our book numbers that the State Board of Accounts approves.
Yes.
This is state, this is straight out.
No, 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 no. How the four fifty came into play was numbers from Reedy getting to Kent and Kent brought it to the board. This is what we gotta pay them next year.
I don't, I don't recall that, but that's. I thought, in my personal opinion is, is when we found out before that the pension plan was doing so well, that the city, we cut the payment and lieu of taxes to three fifty. Because we were paying four hundred, that after it got so well that we went to four fifty to let them get their money back.
Right.
Some of their money back. Cause that's the way I recall.
Correct.
Okay.
But the numbers that I was shown, to, to get to that four fifty, it was going back to four hundred, the, the fifty thousand back, but was on a set of numbers from Reedy on what the values were.
I never seen those numbers.
Okay.
I can tell you that.
Nor did I. I'm of a mind that we should notify the city that according to the numbers that Todd has derived, um, it has indicated that, that our equivalent pilot amount should be three forty-eight per year. We've been paying four fifty most recently per year. And advise the city that that would be the rate for the coming year, three forty-eight. Uh, but doesn't say anything about if the city would choose to ask us to loan them money. That's a separate transaction. That's not pilot. You can't include loans as pilot amount. That's, that's two different things. So I just feel like we should raise our hand and say, our number appears to be three forty-eight. And then if they wanna challenge that or they wanna hire, uh, Reedy again to get better numbers, then they can, they can do that if they wish.
Well, and, and if we do that, I would like to get clarification before we did that. On, with the State Board of Accounts rules and everything, you know, like right now, we divide it up between
Four.
Four, well, really three and a half. Cause stormwater still just pays a hundred and the, the other fifty that we started adding, we took between stormwater, water, and, not stormwater, water, sewer and electric. And so that wastewater wouldn't get such a big hit, could we take this three forty-eight and divide it out like we do presently? Or do we have to do it exactly to meet State Board of Accounts by the department's assessment?
And again.
Does that make sense?
Well, I think you have to do it like State Board of Accounts wants. I mean.
That's why I said I want clarification.
Okay, well, if we need clarification, by all means, let's get that.
Yeah.
I, I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
But our sewer maintenance building, since it does stormwater, can that building be tied in to stormwater versus wastewater? The appraised value on that building, it houses our stormwater equipment up there and we pay employees a certain amount of money of stormwater.
No, we don't pay any salaries out of stormwater.
We reimburse.
Not stormwater, we don't. When they do a stormwater project, we don't. We just leave it all out of wastewater.
So we, it's just materials and things? Okay. I was under the wrong impression there. I thought there was a billing that came in for X amount of labor for that project.
No, we have, there, there may have been that way, but we have.
It used to be that way. Okay.
We, it just becomes an accounting nightmare and doing this and that.
Well, in terms of pilot, it, it, it doesn't get into, to the area of, uh, labor expense and so forth. Um, maybe as a secondary question for the State Board of Accounts, uh, if there's a shared asset that is in this taxable valuation such as that building, can we estimate it's fifty percent stormwater and fifty percent, um, sanitary water and therefore is it?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Cause some of the equipment, some of the equipment is, was purchased through stormwater, one of the VAC tracks.
Well, see, we still have, uh, we still have machinery and equipment in here with a value of two hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. So it is covered.
Okay.
So I got a copy of, uh, Reedy's report and, and our report and I'll just give a copy to everybody, so.
So Todd, if you're saying to the board that you're, you're planning on contacting the State Board of Accounts, I, I'm agreeable with that.
I do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know.
Not that we're going on about.
Yeah, but if that way they say you could divide it up as long as you don't exceed this amount.
Yeah.
But just so that you know, on, on sewer, you know, you're increasing it ninety thousand dollars from where it presently is. But we had a debt service reserve that came off in June this year.
Correct.
Two hundred and some thousand dollars. So it's not a deal breaker for sewer at this point in time because it's, we're actually still gonna come out positive on, on the budget.
Whether we do, whether we do or don't, it's kinda immaterial. Pilot is pilot, whether we have the money to pay it easily or not, what is difficult or.
You're correct. You're gonna have to find it.
No, we got other projects to do too with that money.
Yeah, but like I said, from a, from a budgetary standpoint though, it could have been worse.
Oh, yeah.
We still had that debt reserve or reserve set on us and we had to come up with a ninety thousand dollars out of the budget.
Correct.
That would have been a deal breaker, but this one, it's not terrible, but that's why I want clarification. If they say you can divide it up between all utilities, we don't care. And, you know, everybody's still gonna save a little bit of money in their budgets from where they are right now.
Well, I'm like Krista, I'm not an attorney. Um, the statute reads with, with respect to the utilities, municipal utilities, it, it, it doesn't get into departments this and that. So I think it's collectively the utilities, but.
Yeah, yeah.
They may have a different, different take on it, so.
Now, did you ever get any answers specifically regarding the interest that was being accrued on?
That's been taken care of.
Okay, that's what I was, thank you.
That was a no-no. And that's been taken care of.
Good, we're making progress.
Cause I know it was a substantial amount and as we're talking about insurance and we're talking about other things, I'm like. Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a lot of money, but that's been taken care of.
Correct. Coffee can.
Coffee.
So then, do we, do we have to resolve any, what, what do we do from here? Just that?
Well, I think, I think where we are now is we get, Todd gets more firm answers on some of those, uh, State Board of Accounts.
Yep.
And then.
The value from the insurance company on our property.
Well, and I don't know if that's really gonna change much from what our book show right now anyway. You know, and it may not be good because they're doing it from an insurance standpoint.
I'm sure that your house is insured for more than what you probably could buy it or sell it for, most likely.
Right, cash value or replacement value, right?
Yes, it is.
Two different terms.
It may not help us and may hurt us.
Right.
Yeah.
But knowing what it is is not a bad thing. We don't have to cite it or use it.
But anyway, once we get what we feel is a, a number that we're we, we have the, in black and white, how it was done, how much it is. And it's not gonna be seven hundred thousand or whatever, whatever it's going to be. We present that to the city and say, you know, this is our, this is the calculation that our people come up with. If you got a different calculation, we need to know how it was done because.
Yes, yes.
Because it is not, we don't feel that it was done the way it should and, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe we have to, I don't know, but we have to be negotiating with them or what, but.
I don't think there's any negotiating at this point in time.
Well, I, I think the, I think the question is how do we figure out what the value to be plugged into the calculation?
Correct.
That's the only area that you could really.
Correct.
Negotiate on is, are we using this value or are we using this value? Are we calculating the value from the assessed value, the appraised value, the book value, whatever the case may be?
Right.
So I would agree with you. The only thing that you can, you know, really play with at all is that.
We need a value to plug in to get the numbers, so we pay exactly no more, no less.
Yep. And then I, I just, I'm a stickler for process. So I just wanna make sure that the process is clear and transparently done.
Correct.
That there is some sort of record as to how we came to that decision, then how the money is requested, where the money goes and how it's accounted for.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, anything else? I'm trying to think. We got insurance, pension plan, uh, employee reviews.
Yes, two things. Uh, I have one, I have two, two new topics real quickly. I support Krista's idea of, uh, celebrating our employees and I'd like to discuss briefly a, uh, second, uh, celebration of luncheon later this year to be scheduled. And I'd like to nominate, uh, Chairman Kelly and Krista to, uh, work on that, although we're not gonna vote.
Even after I told my problems last time.
Hopefully you don't hurt Mark from state.
You know, you know what, Mike? I sat in on that conversation and.
You only heard half of it, by the way.
I know, I heard half of it because the rest of it was going through your ears and I understand that because my wife wears hearing aids. But the part of the conversation I heard was you were bullied very bad. And that is not a very, very good business decision on his part. And you, you, you took more than I would have because there is an off button on that phone that I would have hit very quickly.
Well, and I think it, I think it just raises an important point for people to understand that we as a utility are not only providing utilities within the city limits of Frankfurt, that there are a wide swath of individuals who are rate payers of the utilities. And therefore, they may not exist within city limits.
Correct.
They may live in city limits and be a rate payer, but their business may not be a rate payer, but that doesn't negate the fact of us doing business with individuals that are, are rate payers, even if they don't live in city limits.
Correct.
Right.
Because we serve all the way to Tipton with our utilities.
And you serve me and I live just north of Mechanicsburg, right? So it's just.
And, and after the fact, we found out the guy is a.
This guy is a rate payer. He is a residential rate payer.
I tip my hat to him and again, great, great comment there, Rick. Uh, we need one by the end of the year, yes.
So I, I would welcome any updates that you, you folks wanna give in our next board meeting. I just leave it at that. Perfect.
And I, you know, that goes in, I, I have some recommendations for next year of going into some additional ways to recognize individuals, whether it be service awards being celebrated at a specific time of year, whether it be employee of the year type concepts. Those types of things, I think it could go a long way in continuing to show appreciation, especially as we face some of these difficult conversations about insurance and about other things that may change, depending on what is all decided. Just continuing to move toward strengthening and continuing to champion employee culture and employee appreciation is just really, really important.
Right. Can you add another one, Rick?
My last topic, uh, should not be controversial, but I think it's an improvement. And I, I'm sure, uh, Krista, uh, will clue in on this as I mentioned it. Uh, we have an opportunity to, uh, strengthen our brand identity. That, that brand identity is not the utility board, it's Frankfurt Municipal Utilities. So, uh, as a request to Todd, um, what I've, uh, observed over the years, I'd like to get us away from next year. And, and that is, uh, people walking down the street in, in a sweatshirt or t-shirt that says W W P on it or some other obscure three-letter acronym, which no one understands what it means. So I, I'm a champion of brand identity. I know several of our department heads have shirts that say Frankfurt Municipal Utilities on them. I love to see that logo unified, very similar to Lebanon Utilities. You don't see Lebanon Water, Lebanon Sewer, Lebanon Waste, Wastewater, Lebanon Internet. You see Lebanon Utilities. I'd like to see Frankfurt Municipal Utilities. You see Lebanon Utilities, I'd like to see Frankfurt Municipal Utilities on our shirts and on our sweatshirts, so everyone can see that's an employee of Frankfurt Municipal Utilities.
Everybody that goes out, it's all, every, every shirt they wear and everything, that logo's right on the front.
And what's in the back is W W P or W W.
W W T P, Wastewater Treatment Plant is what they have on the back, but those guys really aren't seen that much.
In letters that big?
Yeah, I mean, we, next time they get shirts, I'm not concerned about that, but everybody does have these logos on their shirts now, Rick. Sweatshirts, jackets, everything, all of them.
I guess I'm asking, could we put it on the back instead of a W W?
I would, yeah, I don't see why we could.
Okay, great.
Well, and one of the things that we did, um, as a part of the brand identity project with the city is we took the city logo, the primary logo, and then underneath it for each office or department, they now have a matching logo with their department name underneath it, so it could be as simple as, exactly. It could be as simple as taking that logo.
It wouldn't be a billboard on the back.
Yep, and it would be for letterhead reasons, it would be for specific use reasons, right?
Yeah, the one thing, I mean, if we would put something on the back, obviously on, on electric, we would do it because it'd have to be embroidered with, of our thread.
Right.
That would get a little pricey on that, but the other stuff, they, because it couldn't be an iron-on, but some of the other departments, I mean, I don't, whatever you guys want, but really, everybody does have this logo on, on their chest.
Right below it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and it can get difficult to embroider when it's that small, but, um, there are ways around it.
Could you maybe come, in a, in a regular meeting, could you come back to the board with your recommendation for next year? Before we buy shirts and sweatshirts and.
For the backs, yeah, we'll just remove it. How about that? And we just have it on the front.
Don't care.
Perfect.
I, I like that.
When I'm, when I see someone come to my yard and I'm gonna address them or say, hey, who are you? I'm not talking to their back, I'm talking to, to them, face to face, so I would see a logo on the front.
Yeah, but they, they all are there now, seriously.
Are there people wearing outdated shirts? Cause they're not all wearing shirts that have the logo on the front.
They, they could be, but that can be stopped very easily.
Maybe that's a part of the conversation as well, okay.
I got one other thing.
All right.
This letter that we all signed.
Yes.
Uh, the plan was to send that to different org, different bodies of government and whatever. Well, as you discovered, you had to go down and get the email addresses for that. As I looked at the email, at the different plan, like planning commissions and everything, there's no source of email for those people, uh, that, that the public can get to. My thought was, go to Liz for the county.
Yep.
And, and get, and ask her, I may, maybe they, those people don't want public email things, but they evidently, they communicate, she must communicate to them in some way. Ask her to forward this letter in an email to those people that are on those boards. And same thing with, uh, Don Stock's area of, uh, the, the.
B Z A and.
B Z A, if they're, if they're a, a city employee, we, you can get their email address, but if there are the, a citizen on there, it's not available on any of the websites that I can find.
Sure, so like B Z A doesn't have a Frankfurt or a county email address, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, they do not.
But I'm sure that they get communication from.
Right, yeah, they would, I can confirm.
I got that from, I got mine from Sam Payne when I was on the B Z A, but he was the city engineer at that point in time.
Sure.
Or in that office, he's the one that sent me money.
So I guess what I wanna do is I wanna go in, into Liz's office and Don's office and say, can you, will you send this out? This is, this is a statement we'd like for them to be able to, to refer to, if somebody asks them about something with utilities.
Yep.
I wouldn't frame it in the form of a question, though. I would just, I'd just tell them, you need to say, I need, I need you to send this.
Okay, yeah.
This needs to get taken care of to all these individuals.
Please, yes.
Yeah, please, and thank you, please and thank you.
And I, I fully support, Mike, if you do that face to face, I think that would be effective.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think it'd be effective if you just sent an email to an individual, hey, please forward this, let's, let's not go there, let's, let's make a face to face.
That's all I've got.
I got one more thing too. Uh, Krista, Mike and I are gonna start negotiation with electric Thursday, and I don't know where it's gonna go, but what kind of guidelines do you think the three of us should follow? Or do you have anything that you're even thinking in mind because I wanna get this moving along?
I would be extremely cautious about any implied commitment or, uh, changes in salary or benefits or wages or anything like that because the, my take on the city is, they may have approved their proposed budget for next year. Whether they're gonna meet that or not, uh, we don't know. Uh, there are people at the county level expecting three or four times the raise that they're gonna probably get. I don't wanna be in that position where someone in our employment heard through a labor negotiation that, well, we, we should be able to get five percent this year, I, I don't wanna hear that.
No, and we don't really, when we do it, we come to a happy medium, but whatever it is has to come back here to be approved anyway, so.
As long as you're not obligating us.
No, 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 and I don't think we'll get that far Thursday anyway.
What maybe is a leeway we can work with?
Zero percent.
Okay, I don't think that's gonna fly, but.
Yeah.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't have a number that, that I can say, well, you're gonna at least get three and a half percent, I don't have.
No, 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 I'm not using that big of a number neither, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but we, well, we could just talk to them and stuff and that could be.
We'll find, we'll find out what they, we'll find out what they're asking for because last year we went to water and it was astronomical, those guys was in orbit.
I mean, to my understanding, right, the likelihood of us making any decision in this meeting, we won't. This is information gathering upfront, what is the union expecting of us? Then we survey that information, we provide our recommendations to the board, we vote to approve, we take it back to them and negotiations continue.
And if I'm not mistaken.
No, we, we've been doing it back and forth, and then when we, they, we think we have an agreement, we would come back here in an executive session.
We bring it to the board, got it, so we do all the back and forth.
I thought we could have an executive session on union negotiations.
But if the board says no, then we have to start to go back and.
Right, that makes sense.
And within all that, there is a great many, there's a history of a great many of requests from the union that are not financial in, in nature, you know? Can I have the first and second deer hunting day in Michigan off without affecting my vacation time? I mean, there's all kinds of weird stuff that comes out.
That answer's always been no, hasn't it?
So, we don't know what they're gonna ask until they ask it, but, but they're over there, uh, making a list of what they're gonna ask for, and it's always much more than we can accommodate.
Oh, yeah.
And we just have to wait and see what they ask for.
Todd, I'll ask, has the, I'll call it consolidation of some positions, is that gonna have to be addressed in the, in the contract? Okay.
Nope.
This will be my first full union negotiation process, so I plan to be a sponge.
Yeah.
And absorb as much as possible.
It's really not that bad, it used to be bad, but last, last year we were done with both of them, two meetings.
Yeah, I remember you guys mentioning that.
Well, the first meeting at water was brutal though.
It was.
We had one person in particular, and then once they were off of that, off of the union negotiations and we got a replacement in, it was like silk at that point in time.
Sure.
But we're, we'll be honest.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Anything else? I think it's been productive.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and we need to do this every once in a while just to kind of clear some of the.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Questions up.
Absolutely.
Well, and it also confirms, we, we do really have a business need to meet twice a month. Once a month isn't, isn't near enough, twice a month still requires sessions like this to augment the normal meeting, so I, I think it's great.
I think especially coming into the end of the year where we've got all this stuff to talk about. I think it wouldn't surprise me if we have to do this every month through the end of the year, have an extra work session, so.
Thank you all.
Thank, thank you, Alicia, for keeping us on track.